Internet's not working up here.
Pardon?
Internet's not working up here. We're gonna have to go without Facebook. Is Jerry coming?
Is that the cherry? Don't we plug that other end of that thing, right? Is this the internet? Or is it Wi-Fi? This is the south.
Well, there's supposed to be something plugged in right there. And I don't know if the board actually touched it.
Oh, well, did the...
Yeah, it's gonna be... You can't say it's one line over there.
Is that two days you want us here?
Uh, yeah. For sure.
They said he's still stuck at work.
I was gonna say...
How come we didn't get it all right directly?
He must've touched it when the board election was up here. We don't have internet right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
No one will hear me.
Rick's got you out of there.
All right. It is now 7:02 and we were trying to see if we could get the internet to work, but apparently we cannot, so we will begin anyways. So, welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for November 9th, 2021. And if you would stand for the pledge, please. And Carl, would you lead us?
I believe this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You made it?
Very much. All right. First item on the agenda tonight is, as usual, our public comment time. So, if you would like to address the board, please feel free to come to the microphone, state your name, and...
Thanks for the invitation. Carl Unwrath, Webster BID, business owner, resident, 9 West Main Street. I just came to thank the village workers for helping out on the Terry Tree Trail. We couldn't have done it without them. Closed the roads east of West Main Street, made it safe for all the kids. Great turnout, considering it rained steadily on and off. I did just under 1,400 pieces of candy right there on Main Street. When it's nice, it's over 2,000, so that's a pretty good turnout. Thanks again to the village for helping us put on another event. We got one more for the year. First Saturday in December. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
If you were attending or did attend the Halloween festivities, there was a great turnout, I thought. Nonstop from 12 o'clock until tapered off just around 2:30. And a little bit of...
Yeah, it was fine.
It was a good time. Anyone else like to address the board? If not, then we will move to our scheduled agenda. And I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Our first item of business is a resolution to approve the minutes from the October 28th Board Meeting. We have them in front of you. A lot of motions were made.
Mayor Byers, we're live now. It seemed to start working.
How wonderful.
Yep.
Those of you who are watching via Facebook, welcome. Glad to have you looking in. Any comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Trusty Buckey?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. Next, we have the claims and warrants. So, if you have any questions, you look those over. There are a couple of clarifications, Jake, that I have or would ask for. First would be the Terry Tree Service with tree removals, 9784 Park and 35 South.
Oh, yes. 35 South is just the address. It's the firehouse address. It's actually our parking lot bag. There was a stump that they ground there.
Oh, a stump?
Yeah, just a stump that was there. Coming all up. And then 9784 where there was big ones on park that were... I went over and looked at one at 97. And it said there was big limbs coming out. Wow, I was there, a big limb fell down. Well, I said, "Okay, you convinced me." But we went, we had a tree guy come out and look, or a garbage truck come out and look. And he said, "Yeah, this one's not in wonderful shape." And wherever there, we saw one across the street that was actually in worse shapes. We had those four.
The other question I have, what was the... You can explain this, maybe this was work that was scheduled to be done at Welch's Greenhouse at 22 yards of topsoil and the grading on Wood Street. Is it Woodstone Stone?
Yep. He co-invented that bill. There's 22 yards you got all together. 16 went in stockpile. Four went to Woodstone Circle where we had stumps ground. On Woodstone Circle, one or two. Wood Street, we did some urban... Or, excuse me, some gutter work out there. Gutter was in pretty rough shape. We're looking at expanding that circle a little bit wider because it's always been terrible, the buses and...
The turnaround.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and then on the south side of it, garbage truck buses. Everybody grabs over the lawn there and just breaks the gutter. So, we just... So, it wasn't bad for the winter. We took it out, put some asphalt in, and then drenched it in the waves in there. So, we used a couple there.
Another subject, the Terry Tree and Wartes. Do we bid those out at all? Or, I mean, are you checking?
Yeah. Yep, Terry Tree has... It's on the county contract.
Okay.
A few years ago, they did where they kind of split the contract. It was county work. It was one price. All other municipalities that they could use the contract, they were different price. Sometimes, depending on the... Depending on the tree, sometimes Terry's better, sometimes Burress' is better. We gotta, you know, shop them around and see which one's better. Terry's price is only one for the ones that are in the right-of-way as well. So, if we have any in the park, they don't... That's not on the... Not on a bid. It's just they bid just for highway work. So, yeah, we do check them out and go back and forth.
The last question that I have, Jake, is... I don't know if this was planned or not, but I'm looking at the overhead door at the influence building with a complete replacement. Was that due to corrosion? Is that planned? Was that unplanned or what?
Yeah, it's corrosion with the environment in there and some of the gases. They'll kind of eats away at it. That was the original door from when they did that building, I want to say 17, 18 years ago. And in that environment, it's pretty decent. So, they got the new door, but then it has to be that opener and stuff. It has to be intrinsically safe because of the atmosphere. Or the potential atmosphere, I guess.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy? Trusty Buckey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening is to set a public hearing on the proposed local law number one of 2021. This is titled "Opting Out of Licensing and the Establishment of Retail Cannabis Dispensaries and/or On-Site Cannabis Consumption Establishments Within the Village of Webster." And it would read as follows. Whereas pursuant to the New York Cannabis Law 131, municipalities may opt out of allowing retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate and operate within their boundaries. And whereas this board has been presented with and has introduced a draft proposed local law number one of 2021 titled "Opting Out of Licensing and Establishment of Retail Cannabis Dispensaries and/or On-Site Cannabis Consumption Establishments Within the Village of Webster." And whereas the adoption of said local law is subject to a public hearing. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to Section 21 of the Municipal Home Rule Law of New York, the State of New York, a public hearing on said proposed local law number one of 2021 shall be held on the 23rd day of November 2021 at 7:15 p.m. at the Community Meeting Hall, 29th South Avenue, Webster, New York. And that notice of the time and place of such hearing describing in general terms the proposed local law shall be published once on or before the 18th day of November 2021 in the Webster Herald, the official village newspaper of the Village of Webster and a newspaper of general circulation in the Village of Webster. This resolution, I would, I suppose, ask if there are any comments regarding it. If you would like me to read the proposed law, I can do that at this particular point in time. This is the proposed local law that will be up for a public hearing and on the next meeting on November 20... What did I say? 3rd. Being enacted by the Board of the Trustees of the Village of Webster, New York, its hollows. Number one legislative intent is the intent of this local law to opt the Village of Webster, New York out of hosting retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishments within its boundaries. Number two, authority. This local law is adopted pursuant to New York Cannabis Law 131, which expressly authorizes cities and villages to opt out of allowing retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate and operate within their boundaries. Number three, provision. Pursuant to 131 of the Cannabis Law in the Village of Webster, the Village of Webster hereby requests the Cannabis Control Board of the State of New York to prohibit the establishment of cannabis retail dispensary licenses and usages and the establishment of cannabis onsite consumption licenses and usages within the jurisdiction of the Village of Webster. Permissive referendum, number four. Pursuant to 131 of the Cannabis Law, this local law is subject to a permissive referendum governed by Section 24 of the Municipal Home Rule Law. Number five, severability. If the provisions of any article, section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, or clause of this local law shall be judged invalid by a court for uncompetent jurisdiction, such order or judgment shall not affect or invalidate the remainder of any article, section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, or clause of this local law. And number six, effective date. The local law shall be effective upon the filing with the Office of the Secretary of State. So, that is the proposed local law, number one. It does, in fact, therefore prohibit the retail dispensaries, cannabis dispensaries and/or the onsite cannabis consumption. This does not prohibit it being rescinded in the future, but this needs to be done, I believe firmly in this, that this needs to be done now prior to December 31st because if it were... If it is not done by December 31st, then automatically we would be... It would be possible to have cannabis consumption and retail consumption here in the village. You cannot opt out after December 31st. You can, however, opt back in after December 31st. Kind of like Hotel California.
I got your reference.
Anyways, so that's the local law. And obviously, we're looking for a public referendum, public comment on this. And that would be the next Board meeting on November 23rd. So, any comments from the board? If there are none, then I would ask for a motion to approve and to set this public...
I'll make that motion. Well, second.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Buckey?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you all. We'll move to the next meeting. Any comments? Okay. Next, we have the resolution to approve the Village Board to sign 2021-22 Village Tax Surrender. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trusty Buckey?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you for signing.
It says it was due to the county annul before November 7th, two days ago.
Yeah. Yes, no. It's... They're okay with that as long as you... It's coming in that week. So, we can still send it to them, but they need board approval first. So, I already sent them the numbers. So, we're good.
Why don't you say like, "Annul before the end of this week," whatever that is?
Because I don't write this. They write it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Doesn't make a lot of sense, but...
It said the same thing last year. Sorry.
Well, probably didn't say November 7th, but...
November 7th. Then Sunday, correct?
Yeah. Well, that makes no sense to say November 7th anyhow if that was a Sunday. How are you supposed to get to them on a Sunday?
They also gave me one from 2018. So, she sent me the one from like three years ago. Yeah.
Something could help these days.
I don't know. I just don't...
Well, thank you all for signing. All right. What do we have next? We have the budget to actual report. We have all in front of you. This is simply the year-to-date actual expenditure, general and sewer. I believe that sewer is in here, though I only see general. But this is the... That would be probably actually through, not November, but through October. We will begin one of these apparently on a monthly basis. But my interest will be to look at this next month in December because that will take us through half the year. November is the half-year point. And so, as we look at it, we'll have a good idea of where we are. But this is... This is what was presented to us at the time. So, this is for general information for yourself to look over, noting where we are in terms of village expenses and if we are on track or not. And I think most of the... What you see, the highlights there for 100% used actually are pretty much items that we would normally pay, you know, in the early part of the year, so... Are there any other comments or questions on that? If not, we will move on. If you don't have any particular questions. Okay. And we will move to our next item on the agenda, and that would be to Dan. Do you have anything for us this evening, sir?
I do not.
You do not? Quiet on the legal.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
Sorry. The... So, she put... She gave me a certificate from three years ago. The... It's actually due November 10th. You just caught me off guard. I apologize. So, it's not due till tomorrow. But they give me this form from three years ago. So, I thought I updated it all. I'm sorry. So, it is due tomorrow.
Okay. So, November 7th date is incorrect?
That was from three years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, apparently I updated it.
So, it is due November 10th?
Yes.
Well, that's good.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. That's good. Okay. Well, we have nothing then from our attorneys. That you done. And we move now to the clerk. Maybe that's what you have for us.
Yep, that's all. Just if I can get a signature, that's all I got.
All right.
And then if anyone can come Thursday for Veterans Day, we're going to be doing our luncheon. So, if anyone can come over and volunteer, we'd appreciate it.
What time was that?
I think we're doing 12... Was it 12 to 2?
No, the ceremony or the remembrance is always at 11 o'clock.
And then directly after they come in, right?
Correctly after, yes.
Okay.
It should be... They're typically short, so it should be 11:30-ish.
11:30, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jake.
And that will run until... Well, we'll announce that approximately 2 o'clock. Other?
Yes.
All right. Jake, DPW in the store?
The word of the day is leaves, I guess. And so, if you're out and about outside trying to shake the trees and get the leaves to fall because they haven't really let my head... So, I'm a little anxious, but we'll get them up to the first snowfall. And obviously, we shift over to snow. And typically, we have an opportunity, we'll go back at doing the leaves. So, hopefully, hopefully, the snow holds off and lets us get them. But it's not looking so great this year at all, basically. So, that's it. The other... We discussed last time briefly about getting green light at the Wells to do a camera thing. We did get a quote for... I used to say the company that we were there looking at the access to a quote for... To do a quote for a camera system as well, since they did that stuff. And I'm not going to share it with you because it was almost as much as our tax warrant we just did. So, we are not doing that system, I'm sure. But I will look at... We're looking at blinker, different cameras that we can install. So, we're going to see what we can do. Some, at least we get, you know, something that's... Somebody's in and given the building. So, we should be able to do it relatively inexpensive, but we still will need, as long as everybody's fine, still need some sort of internet down there. So, green light, we had looked there, $100 a month for something to be able to upload video. You know, it's a terrible thing. So, okay. We'll go with that. And that's it. Then we'll... As I were looking at a little camera system, kind of where you get four or five cameras and a... Someone more tax savvy than us, but we've been looking at it for a bit now. So, I just wanted that one checked, but that was... It's a really nice system, but I...
Was there 50 megabyte? Too small? Not fast enough? Instead of 100? It's like half the price.
No, they had... They said they were... I don't know what this stuff means. They said 50... Or 120 or 50/50. I think that's upload-download. So, he suggested because we're here to put in a video, do 50 upload, 50 download. So, upload-download? Or download-upload? I think it was download-upload. It's a word that they do it in. So, you're suggesting to do the faster with the 50 language, whatever it is. Upload is better for video and stuff, so...
I'm pretty sure that 50's not available to businesses either. I think the minimum picked was the one that they offered.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's true. He should say it's the business one.
That's the minimum, yeah.
And so, that's 100. I don't know.
For business?
Yes.
Would you guys start looking around for some kind of a camera and stuff?
Yeah, we've been looking around, but then when we were talking to this company, because we're having issues with the gate. I'm trying to figure out if we got... Is that by lighting the card? It's not working. The gate works. We can get in there if I open it, close everything up, go check, and then go to weed, the gate operates. I can bypass it. But the reader, we don't know if it's a reader or the... Or there's the line going between... It's about 1,800 feet from where the card reader is to where the panel is inside the building. It has to authenticate the fob or the card or whatever you have. So, trying to get that narrowed down. So, we're looking at just a short system where you say, "Okay, just from there to there and have something." Somewhere else, then again, right there without... Because that line got hit before and we had to pull. And that's not cheap cable and it's pretty tight. So, we understand it there, but it's a long, long route. And we had to pull with the backhoe last time to get the cable through there, so... I think that's it. And just please keep your weeds out of the gutters and the street. Especially when you get rain. That is not helpful.
Which I think we're supposed to get tonight, on 12.
Yeah, a little bit.
Little bit. All right. Well, for public notification, there's a serial bond interest and principal amount to be paid. The bond was obtained in 2012. And payment of $54,381.25 will be made on November 12th, 2021. Sounds like we are now looking at our public meetings. First of all, I would encourage all of you vets to come out on Veterans Day, both to the ceremony down at the park at 11 o'clock. And then get in your cars and drive by the back parking, by the back entrance to the Village Hall at the fire station. And we will bring out to your cars lunch. We're going to call it dinner at lunchtime. So, please do that. Feel free. We are looking for as many who want to come. We will serve you and say thank you. We will serve you and say thank you for your service. We have our next board meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-third. That is again on a Tuesday because two days later on Thursday is Thanksgiving. So we will be seeing you on Tuesday, the twenty-third. And then we have a village workshop on the following Tuesday, November thirtieth, at six o'clock during the boardroom. There, I believe there's something going on, is there? Or do they have that for the bid in the village? I'm not sure what a, do they have a walk-around? Is there not?
It's going to say beer, beer watch.
Or in a troby?
I'm not sure that it...
There's going to be another one on both ends of Main Street. I just got a request for a drinking in public kind of letter that we have, that we have to issue from our office. So I think we'll be getting some more info on that to kind of include the other side of Main Street. So I just got a request from Finn, the owner of Finn's. So probably getting some more info on that.
Twenty-seven.
On the twenty-seventh, yeah.
That's right.
So it's three to six.
Three to six?
Yeah.
And then, of course, we are in the midst of planning and working with the bid on Christmas, Christmas parade and activities. And that would be on Saturday, the fourth. Is that correct?
That's the date, Jake? Yep.
Yes.
I think it's the fourth.
Yes. And I just had a meeting with Elena and Jake and Joe, and we're really excited. Sounds like it's going to be really awesome. And we're going to be doing a storytime with Jason Poole in the main area. It's going to be a whole Christmas village, and we're really excited, so. And Jake and his guys are going to help us put the lights and do what they always do, make everything look amazing, and so we're really excited.
What time is that ending to?
So that's, this year, it's going to be three to five for Santa. And then directly after that will be storytime with Jason Poole. And until six, when, if the parade happens, I think that's still up in the air, but Santa three to five, and then hot cocoa, and they can, depending on weather, they can make a little woodshop toy in Santa's workshop. And, yeah, Elena from, and all the other bid members got a really great plan, so. And they've been looping us in, and it's going great.
What was the date again?
Um...
December fourth.
December fourth. There won't be anything going on on Main Street. Nothing will be closed that day or the day of until the parade, if that happens. So everything will be centralized into, in Vets Park this year.
Good. Good. Yeah.
Thing about the bid, too, you know, Carol's been in the last few meetings to thank us, you know, the DPW for all the setup and stuff. Just want to keep in mind the bid is all private business owners, and they're, all their, they're not getting overtime doing this. They're putting on events, and it's just, it's their money, their time, and they're invested, and they do a lot of great events for the village and bring people, bring people on and just a lot of neat, you know, a lot of neat stuff. So, you know, our guys, they do, they do a great job. They work with them. The bid, too, they do an excellent job getting, because a lot of planning goes into it and a lot of time the day of the event. And it's, you know, time away from their families and time away from their business that they're giving back to us on top of paying a little extra and then doing all the setup and everything and cleanup. So, you know, link them, too. They, and we, so we spot all the things that they do.
Yeah.
And on that note, I would also encourage, I'd also encourage all of you to come out and to avail yourself of the opportunities to shop in the village. There are a lot of neat shops and neat things that are in them, and so come out and support your local artisans, if you will. Okay. If that, has anyone else had any announcements for us or comments? If not, I would thank you all for coming this evening and for tuning in, listening in, and we look to see you on the twenty-third. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you and good evening.